And welcome to tonight's city council meeting for June 24, 2019. We're going to begin tonight with a proclamation. JJ, do we, are you?
I'm here.
Okay, all right. I'll tell you what, yeah, I'm gonna go and call the order and we'll go ahead and begin with an invocation by Mary Smith, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Thanks, Mary.
All right, will y'all bow your heads with me? Loving Father, we come to you tonight and ask for your blessings on the people gathered here and for the work that we're going to undertake tonight. We pray for you to guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. We ask for your wisdom and discernment as we address the matters at hand and ask that you would show us how to conduct our work with joyful and grateful hearts. We are so thankful for the many blessings that you've given to the city of Homewood and pray that we can use those blessings to bless others. Pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I tell you what, before we do roll call, Mayor is here. Mayor, if you want to handle a proclamation for the Alzheimer's Association.
That was almost worth a time.
It was, but we said a prayer for you and everything.
Yeah. Thank you.
And which have you said?
Me.
You, tell me your name.
Kimberly.
Kimberly, and?
I'm Jessica.
Hey, Jessica. So we have Kimberly and Jessica with us tonight. And if you don't mind, I'm gonna, why don't you come over here and stand with us. So we have a proclamation for Alzheimer and Brain Awareness Month, and it's way too early in the proclamation to not pronounce Alzheimer correctly. It's listed about eighteen times, I think. So we have, whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive degenerative disease of the brain, causing deterioration in memory and thinking, as well as judgment and reasoning ability, it also affects behavior, emotions, and the ability to perform self-care. And whereas according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, Alzheimer's is the sixth leading cause of death for older adults and the third leading cause of death in Alabama. And whereas of the approximately 5.8 million people in the United States living with Alzheimer's, 92,000 of those reside in the state of Alabama, while a staggering total of 16.1 million Americans care for an individual with Alzheimer's or other dementia. And whereas every 65 seconds, someone in the United States develops Alzheimer's disease, which is 100% fatal and is the only cause of death that cannot be prevented, cured, or slowed. And whereas Alzheimer's disease and other dementias will cost the nation $290 billion in 2019, these costs are expected to rise to $1.1 trillion by 2050. And whereas the Alzheimer's Association is the largest not-for-profit founder of research in the world and the third-largest funder for Alzheimer's research behind the United States and Chinese governments. Whereas the Alzheimer's Association's mission is to eliminate Alzheimer's disease through the advancement of research, the purpose of the Alabama chapter of the Alzheimer's Association is to empower and support individuals, families, caregivers, and communities affected by this disease in the state of Alabama. And whereas the mayor and city council recognize individuals, families, friends, and caregivers dealing with the devastating effects of Alzheimer's disease, the researchers who are seeking a cause or causes and cure, and the educational programs and support services provided by the Alzheimer's Association. So now therefore, I Scott McBrayer, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, hereby proclaim June 2019 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. And ladies, thank y'all for all of the work that you're providing and doing for obviously countless families in the state of Alabama and certainly in the city of Homewood, all you're doing to help with that. So thank y'all very much. Yeah, you can come up here and get a good picture. Just right there. Now, if we keep going.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
No, well, I'll say one thing. We have our largest event of the year is called the Walk Into Alzheimer's.
Yeah, just wanna step up to the mic.
So our largest event of the year is called Walk Into Alzheimer's: Heart of Alabama. It'll be Sunday, September 29 at Sauce Furnaces. You can follow us on social media @EndAlz, B-H-A-M-A-L. I'm the walk chair for the third year in a row, and my mom has early onset, which is kind of what brought me into this fight, and I live in the city of Homewood as well. So I encourage you all to come out to the walk. If anyone is interested in saying a few words before we do our walk, we do a short two-mile walk, it's not a run, around the city. And it's just a great day for family and for us to just recognize our caregivers and people with Alzheimer's. And it starts at 1:00. We walk at 3:00, and we invite you all to come. And you can get more information at ALZ.org/A-L or find us on social media. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mayor. All right, with that, we'll begin with tonight's meeting and roll call, Melody.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Here.
Mr. Thames?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Here.
Mr. McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andrews?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
And Mr. Lombaus absent. So you have a quorum.
Thank you, Melody. All right, we'll begin with approval of the minutes from, or dispense with the reading of the minutes from June 10, 2019.
I move to dispense with the reading and approve the minutes as presented.
All right, motion by Mrs. Smith?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We're gonna have one, as I understand, just one amendment to tonight's agenda. We're gonna be adding to committee referral, 3706-19, which is a request for consideration to change building inspection officer position that was budgeted in fiscal year 2018-19 to plumbing, mechanical, and gas inspections officer, coming to us from Wyatt-Pugh and BEZ. And we're gonna have this referred to finance. And with that, I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended by Mr. McCloskey.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we have an amended agenda. Have lots to talk about board vacancies and appointments. Kind of opened the box on that. First thing, we'll talk about Ward 5 Municipal Housing Code Abatement Board. That position has expired, and as I understand, Melody, we need to reopen that?
Yes, sir. Y'all had it open back in the fall of 2018, but we still have a vacancy, and Mr. Pease said he would like to get that vacancy, like, for us to re-announce it, because he needs to get that board fully staffed.
Okay, so we'll certainly reopen it. I guess the only question is how long we want to keep it reopened. I mean, I would say for another 90 days.
Oh, yeah. I wasn't aware that it was open, I mean, that we didn't have anyone in that spot, so yeah, please, it'd be great.
Yeah, so let's give it 90 days, see if we can, and maybe Jennifer and I will talk about that.
So you want to pick a council meeting day in like three months, and that's when it closes, or let's see?
And look, I assume we don't want to keep it open-ended. I mean, I think we want to...
What day, a council meeting day in September, that you want to have it close at 4:30?
Just a second, how about the second council meeting in September? Well...
That'll be, should be September 23.
Okay.
Is that what you said, Mr. Pease?
Yeah.
September 23.
Yes, Mr. Gualtney?
Ms. Seltzer, is the Ward 4 position not also vacant at the moment, or is it?
Let's see, of the abate, let's see.
We have, we have as Ward 4, Frances Allison, is that not correct?
I was somewhere.
Okay, we have, we have her, and I'll give you her contact, we have her term expired in October of 2021. Is that Ward 4?
I believe so, yes. I'll follow up. I just thought they were rolling through people making the meetings, so...
The rest of them, we can show somebody in through 2021.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
All right, thank you for that. We, meanwhile, we do have a couple of applicants for the Ward 4 Library Board, which closed today. And we have two applicants and I guess a need for interviews. I don't know how you guys want to handle that.
Yeah, I told Melody I'm leaving town Thursday, and I really will be gone for the next two weeks, so if Alex needs to go ahead and do that in my absence, I'm happy for him to do that, unless they can both interview in the very short window of time that I will still be here.
Do you want to set a date for it, or do you want to make the next council meeting? What is your pleasure, sir?
I was afraid July 4th may be hard to get people in, but...
I know, that's kind of what I thought, that that would...
I haven't called the applicants yet to see if they're gonna be in, but I just figured it's gonna probably be a little difficult with July 4th.
Probably not. I would hate to do it. Yeah, and the week of the 4th, I don't think that's even worth trying. Are you back on the week of the 8?
I'm gone again.
Okay. I'll get with Melody and see if I can work out a date, how about that? Or the week of the 8, sometime of the week of the 8.
Okay. All right, I will leave, I'll...
And we'll circulate that timeline.
Sounds good. All right, we also have two at-large positions for the Education, Educational Building Authority. As I understand, we need to reopen those two, Melody?
Yes, it closed on 6/10 of 19, but we didn't have any applicant. What ward is that? Are those at large?
These are at large?
Yes, they're at large. Two vacancies of the Educational Building Authority.
There's only three.
They only convene if they have, if they have something to, we're just trying to get everything, every ward that's vacant in case you need to call.
Okay. So there's really, there's really nothing to do unless there's a project for them?
That's correct. We need to be radical.
Okay. Well, why don't we reopen it and...
Okay.
Why don't we keep that one open for six months? See?
You're killing me with the six months.
Why don't you do the same as 90 days? Why don't you do the same 90 days as before?
I gotta look at my calendar.
All right, we'll do 90 days. Why don't we do the same date?
September 23. Remind me in three years.
Well, I got a feeling this one is gonna be hard to fill, so...
Next time you chair, I'm gonna make sure I know what 36 means for council meeting.
That's how we lawyers work, okay? Mike can tell you that.
I get it now.
So you are reopening until 9:20?
That's how we bill.
Exactly. That's right. Totally different. So like, until 9:23, like you did the other one?
Okay.
Okay, next, Board of Adjustments and Appeals. We have numerous at-large positions, and this is sort of the same thing. This is for appeals of our department decisions about Board of Adjustment Appeal matters, construction matters. And these, as I understand, these members have to have construction experience?
There are qualifications, professional qualifications for those new adjustments.
Is this, is this open right now, or is it closed?
It closed, I have down that it closed July 11, 2018. That's the last on the board that, I don't know if y'all, that's the last time I showed that y'all, that closed, and nobody applied, so...
Yeah, because you have to, like you said, have to have specific experience.
Okay, well, I don't know what the, what the council is, but...
Like Mr. Pease said, this one would be convened if somebody wanted to challenge a position that they made at BEZ, but we just were letting y'all know that everybody's term is expired on it, so if they needed it for whatever reasons.
I don't know if we need any action on that one. Doesn't seem to be in need for it. Or we can carry it over and do another, fit in our 90 days, and we can revisit it then. I mean, it's sort of a, it's sort of an inactive body that's really not doing anything until it's called upon. But the problem is, is there...
I just wanted to make sure if y'all call upon it, y'all knew that we didn't have it.
Yeah, yeah, I was about to say, you don't want to really want to have it, not need it and not have it.
Well, we got seven positions to put in there, so, all right, let's, we'll put that on our 90-day window as well.
Okay.
And we're gonna at least have a discussion about it, we're gonna figure out, so we're gonna have a, unless we get seven people in, within 90 days.
Reach out to your construction friends.
Okay. And seriously, be thinking of some construction folks who perhaps can, can help us with this board. All right, a couple more. Cable Commission, Ward 3 needs to be opened. That is expired, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can we, can we open that until July 8?
So, yeah.
Yeah, we can do two weeks.
Okay, any objection to that? All right. All right, done. And lastly, Historic Preservation Society, we have an at-large position. This is actually one supposed to be appointed by the mayor, and we just need to reopen this so the mayor can make that appointment.
Yeah, the, the person that was sitting in that spot resigned last week, so we just need to open it up so that we can get some applicants, so that the mayor can appoint somebody.
Okay. You okay with that?
Um, July 8. Do July 8 as well? Yeah.
Sorry, I got it.
Thank you.
And Mr. Wright?
Is that enough time, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
I have an appointment for the Hydra.
Oh, you do have one? Okay.
I do, mhm. Mr. Scott Dean.
But it doesn't close, it doesn't close yet.
Oh, I thought, oh, I thought it had just been opened independently.
I saw it closing on July 8.
Oh, okay, sorry.
He did apply, but...
And I won't be here on July 8, so if someone could put that in for me.
The email said Ward 2, but I...
Oh, I thought it was, I thought there were three at large, I didn't...
Well, there are three, there, there, three at large, and there's a Ward, and there's a Ward 2.
Okay, I'll let, I'll let you handle it then, Andrew.
Well, it sounds like...
Now, Counselor, we've been waiting for weeks to find a word.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Trying to poach them right out from my...
Don't steal them from our...
Nice try, Ms. Andrews. All right, so that one hasn't expired, so why don't we keep that open?
I showed that they left it open until July 8, so I don't, I guess, I guess we need to wait till after then, so make sure nobody else...
All right, I think that's it for board vacancies and appointments. We'll get into our agenda and start with consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve our one item on consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
By Mrs. Smith and second by Mrs. Andrews. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved. First item on our old business agenda is 060219, which is a public hearing tonight for consideration of an ordinance limiting the timeframe of hotel stays within the city limits of Homewood. This is a public hearing, so we're gonna go ahead and open this public hearing tonight, and we'll welcome members of the public to speak about this item tonight. Please come forward and make sure you sign your, your name in with Melody, anyone who wishes to speak on this item.
Sure. Good evening. Ravi Patel, 616 Bristol Lane, Homewood, Alabama, 35226. Basically, the council has heard my objections or reasons why I disagree with this ordinance on multiple different committee meetings and occasions. I just wanted to make a formal objection here tonight, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Anyone else wish to speak in favor or against this item? Seeing no one, go ahead and close tonight's public hearing. And I'll turn it over to any comments or statements or questions from council members? All right, I guess we'll begin with the first reading.
Yes, sir. Excuse me. This is an ordinance to amend the provisions of Article 2 entitled definitions to provide for a new definition for transient of Appendix A entitled zoning ordinance of the city of Homewood. Whereas Section 1, Article 2 entitled definition shall be amended to read as follows, provide for a definition for transients. Transient is a person, firm, or business entity that rents or has furnished any room or rooms, lodging, or accommodations in a hotel or motel for a period of less than 190 continuous days in the city. Section 2 of all other provisions of the zoning ordinance remaining full force and effect, and Section 4 ordinance will become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for unanimous consent by Mr. McCloskey. Second by Mr. Thames. And roll call vote, Melody.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes. Now, we'll entertain a motion for approval by Mr. McCloskey. Second by Mr. Wyatt. And roll call vote, Melody.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
None.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes. So I think that ordinance...
Passes 9 to 1.
What ordinance is that?
2749.
2749 passes 9 to 1. All right, next item, 1306-19, which is a public hearing that was continued from June 10 for the purpose of determining whether any building structure or other improvements situated on 553 Edgecrest Drive is unsafe to the extent it creates a public nuisance and should be demolished. And we are continuing with our public hearing, and Mr. Wyatt-Pugh can update us where we are today.
Yes, sir. Since the last council meeting, I met with Ms. Baylen at her residence, and we went through some of the items that would be required to abate the safety nuisance. And that's, that's sort of what I have to focus on, not, not looking at the way anything necessarily looks, other than just, is it safe or is it unsafe? One of the main things we went over was the, was the handrails and the guardrails on the steps. We also talked about a landing at the bottom of the steps. I believe that's in progress. As far as the rest of the things, the only other really unsafe condition I saw was the, was the condition of the yard. This is what it looks like today. So Ms. Baylen is here, if you'd like to ask her any questions, or if you'd like to ask me any questions, I'd be happy to.
All right, Mr. Wolverton?
So it looks like from the picture, Wyatt, that there's only slats on one side of the stairs there?
Yes, sir. That was in progress today. These pictures are from today.
Okay. And then, were you able to inspect the inside? I know there was a question about where the water runoff was going and whether or not that was contributing to kind of the disintegration of the structure or not?
Absolutely. Surprisingly, it was very dry. It, it's not the way I would have designed it in a perfect world, but it's, it's working. I didn't see any unsafe conditions such as mold, or water spots, or water damage, or any other such thing.
Ms. Smith?
With all of the items in the yard, that still seems to be an issue. Is there a plan to rectify that, and if so, in what sort of time, because we've already allowed two weeks?
That is actually one of the things I spoke about with Ms. Baylen and impressed upon her, that a timeframe was gonna be of, of the utmost importance in this situation, a timeframe from now till finish. And I even spoke with her today, and she said she would come prepared to give you that.
Yes, Walter.
What, going back to the picture, what, what is that other structure next, next to the walkway? I'm trying to figure out, you know, what is, what is that platform?
Good question, yeah. I, I thought that was odd, too. It's a, it's a piece of an old deck that's, I, I think they left there to serve as sort of a scaffolding, and with the plans of tearing it down, at least that's what Ms. Baylen...
Okay, we need to address that.
But I think they left it. They left it there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pugh, did they pull a permit?
Yes, sir. We did get that straightened out.
Mr. Pugh, question?
Yes, sir.
So, recommendation on whether we still have a safety hazard here?
Going strictly on the safety concern, I, I can't in good conscience recommend that it's, that it's not safe.
Any further questions? Here? All right, certainly we'll let the homeowner speak as well, as well as anyone else, so we'll continue with, all right. Thank you. Name and your, your name again?
Angela Baylen, 553 Edgecrest Drive.
Okay. Well, I think you've heard what we've said, what, you know, there's still things that the, the unsafe conditions still exist, and so what, what are your comments about that?
My husband was working on the handrails this afternoon and is still working on that as we speak, which is why I had sent him the pictures of what we were working on this afternoon. The rain kind of got in the way.
Well, we've had two weeks to do it. I mean, so what are your plans with regard to the safety hazards, which the ones I'm looking at, and Mr. Pugh can correct me if I'm wrong, are certainly the rails, which are certainly not up to code, and...
Platform.
Platform, which is possibly a question. I haven't heard that yet, but...
Yes, that's, that's going to be completely torn down.
Okay. And, and, and what are your timing plans on the rail, the platform, and the other items that are still sitting in the yard?
Those are being, we're, they're taking, I mean, we're taking them by truckloads out and, you know, to the dump, and it's just, at this point, simply a matter of getting enough trucks and...
So is that gonna be tomorrow? Is that gonna be the next day?
We... It would be another, if possible, week.
Another week? Okay.
And to finish the rest of that, he's working on the handrails, and we'll have the platform convened.
Okay. All right, anything else?
The, the, we've got the screen to put into the windows. It is an outdoor porch. There are no type of living arrangements or anything like that inside. He inspected it. It's dry inside. There are no issues with mold or any type of runoff, and the siding will be done either in stone or siding.
Is, is the siding presenting any safety issues? Wyatt?
It's, it's not actually siding, it's just, it's a sheathing that's up there now that they've put paint on to protect it from the weather. It's not unsafe. It's not finished, but it's not unsafe.
All right, thank you.
Wyatt, how long is a building permit good for?
Permits are good for six months when a project goes inactive. If work is progressing even at a fairly slow pace, we tend to not void them out.
And then, I guess I was under the understanding that you guys were meeting after the last council meeting, and everything that you said needed to be done was going to be done. It sounds like maybe the railing isn't finished. I'm not sure why it would take two weeks to take things to the dump, or whatever else is there.
Yes, sir. That's a fair point. You're exactly right. The railing is not finished, which I asked them to do. Since it was in progress today, I was sort of giving them the benefit of that progress. But, no, you're absolutely right about that. It's not finished.
Mr. Wyatt?
Mr. Pugh, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. As it currently sits, it is not safe because it doesn't have the railings, it's got the platform, and it's got these items in the yard. Am I, is that correct?
You're correct.
Is there anything else that they need to do?
A landing at the bottom of those steps.
Okay.
Just sort of falls off into the yard.
Or drive, as written.
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, sir, Mr. Walton.
Mr. Pugh, in your estimation, how long should it take to complete the items that present the public nuisance?
Really, from my perspective of safety only, this, the list could have easily been done by now. I mean, a week would be sufficient time to put up some hand railing and a landing and take down that scaffolding or the old piece of the deck, and essentially, that's it. Oh, and clean up the yard. There were quite a few safety hazards there, and I see they straightened up the yard.
All right, thank you all. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor or against this item? Did you sign in with Melody?
Yeah.
Okay. And give us your name, please.
Yeah, my name is Mike Wyndham. I live at five forty-five Edgecrest Drive. I sent J.J. a couple of pictures Friday afternoon at four forty-eight. Not one single thing, and I'll pass this around, not one single thing has been done after, this is this past Friday right here. Now, the yard wasn't clean. Not one thing. The reason, probably a little bit late, I was going to try to get a picture because of the hammering that was going on today. The rain has not been here for two weeks. Mr. Pugh, I think I saw you in front of the door afterwards. He couldn't even get into the backyard, and then, when he did, not one thing has been done. We're not talking about two more weeks, one more week. We're talking about, this has gone on for nine years. This thing has been built. I'm not even sure this woman still lives in the house with him. So let's start there. And let me show you one other picture, just so, like I said, I sent, we're not hauling this off in trucks, waiting on the City of Homewood. I sent J.J. a picture of it. Waiting on the City of Homewood to pick up the trash that's already out there. So we're not, there's not been a truck taking it off. I've seen the guy that has been helping them bring it out to the street. Every bit of it's been brought out to the street. The city didn't pick it up Monday. It's still out there, and whatever trucks they're waiting on have yet to show up. There's no trucks. Every bit of this is a joke. He's up there doing it right now, putting up, and you can hear the pneumatic nailer going off where he's putting up his thing right now, not two weeks ago, but today. And it's, like I say, the yard Friday has not got one piece of paper moved from when it was originally said that we carried on this for two weeks and then two weeks more. Do something about this. This is, three or four neighbors were coming, and they couldn't get to this meeting. But I'm telling you, this has turned into a joke in the neighborhood. And it's turned into a joke for West Homewood. And it's, I mean, especially when you see it behind, you can see the entire joke coming down Oxmoor. Their yard is very prevalent, being the second one in the house, second house on the street. It's, we don't need to continue it. We've continued it for nine years. If this happened in any neighborhood for nine years, something would have stopped. He said it's not safe. It's not safe today. It's not safe during the rain. It's not safe two weeks ago. It's not been safe for nine years. I think it's time to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wyndham. Mr. Wright? Yes, Mr. Thames?
I'm obliged to agree with the resident that just spoke. I don't see any reason why we can't declare this a public nuisance and immediately remove the debris from the yard. There's nothing that says we have to tear the structure down, but we can remove the debris from the yard and lean homeowner for the cost of it. I don't see any reason why the council shouldn't do that at this point.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
It's a question from Mr. Pugh. In terms, is this like the condemnation processes that we've done before, where there's a thirty-day period in which we, we have to give the homeowner thirty days to respond? Is that the same here?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. If you were to pronounce it a public nuisance tonight and pass that resolution, there would be an automatic thirty-day window that would kick in.
So, and then if, for whatever reason, a miracle occurred and everything was rectified in thirty days, they could come back and that would be that?
Certainly.
Thank you. Let me see if there's anything else from the public hearing, other than, all right, that, I'm going to go ahead and, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. We're still going to talk about it. And further comments from the council? Mr. Higginbotham?
I just had a question for Mr. Pugh, because I just wanted to clarify one point to make sure I understand it correctly. So if we move forward with the action tonight, the, one of the things that will happen, the city will make to happen, and then put a lien against the property, for the property owner to pay for it, would be the removal of the debris in the yard? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. After, let me make sure I understand. If you pronounce it a...
After the thirty days?
Okay, yes.
I'm just trying to clarify, to make sure we're not just talking about the demolition of a structure, we're talking about the removal of the stuff that's in the yard as well.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's part of, that is part of the unsafe condition.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
All right, any further comments?
I would move to declare it a nuisance.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Smith to declare it a public nuisance, second by Mr. Wyatt. Any further comment, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so motion, public nuisance carries ten to zero. Next item...
That's resolution...
Oh, that's resolution, I'm sorry.
Nineteen ninety-three.
Resolution nineteen ninety-three. Thank you. All right, next item, sixteen oh six nineteen, which is a, well, we just want to set a public hearing for July eighth, two thousand and nineteen, to consider clearing property located at eleven seventeen Hardwick Lane a public nuisance. Again, that will come up a public hearing on July eighth. Next item, sixteen oh one fifteen, which is update on past, present, and future sidewalks from Greg Cobb and the Building Engineering and Zoning Department. And on this one, sixteen oh one fifteen, we have a report from P and D.
Yes, sir, Mr. Wright. The committee met, and after a hearing from Doug Peterson with Gonzales Strength, voted four to zero to recommend approval for the mayor to sign the contract with Gonzales Strength. The motion was made by Councilor Andrus and seconded by Councilor Jones.
All right, this is, and this is approval of engineering contract, I believe.
Correct. And it deals with the...
Crosswalk.
And the Rumson project combined.
C E and I.
Because I know there's, and there's still a construction item that's still in finance, but this is going to be dealing with engineering. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, this is just the, authorizing the engineering contract.
Gotcha. All right, so we have a favorable motion from P and D. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Andrus. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes ten to oh, ten to zero, and that is nineteen ninety-four. All right, oh eight oh five nineteen, request for consideration to amend open records policy from Liz Elaby and Jennifer Andrus. And on this, we also have a report, this one from Special Issues.
Yes, this was an item that's been on the Special Issues agenda for a couple of weeks, and Jennifer and I met with staff members and Mr. Kendrick and worked out some additional things that we could do on our open records and open meetings responsibilities. And I think we were already doing a lot, but we went ahead and added some additional things that we think could make it even stronger, with the help of Mr. Wallace and some others. And we voted to approve those recommended changes, and that came out of Committee four to zero, with Mr. Gualtney making the motion and seconding, a second from Ms. Andrus.
All right, any further discussion on that? I understand this is not a resolution item, but we'll still entertain, well, it came out of special, I'll still entertain a second for approval of the statement coming out of Special Issues.
Second.
Second by Ms. Andrus. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that statement from Special Issues is approved, ten to zero. Next item, twenty-four oh five nineteen, which is a request to review and amend the West Homewood District zoning ordinance, coming to us from Andrew Wolverton. And we also have a report tonight from P and D on this item.
Yes, sir. The committee met and voted four to zero to refer this item to the Planning Commission, pending review by staff and Mr. Kendrick, the city attorney. Motion was made by Councilor Jones and seconded by Councilor Andrus.
Okay, so this is coming out of P and D to refer a new West Homewood District zoning ordinance to Planning Commission. And I know that's been subject of a lot of hard work by War Two members. And Mike, why don't you update us where we are and thoughts on where we're going on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a very short window to prepare something for last week, and then, in the subsequent week in between committee and tonight, I did get further input from residents and some what I thought were good observations. They would be things that I would think we should include in what we send to the Planning Commission. I included them in an email out to council today, just, so what I would suggest, and Andrew, you know, chime in if this is not copacetic with you, is that in addition to the marked up item, we tell the Planning Commission that we want the proposals, because this was always the intent, but the language does not say this, so that's the problem. We want the proposals to go to the Planning Commission before they come to council, but that they ultimately would come to council. The way it reads now, it just says it comes straight to council, which is, was not the intent, but that is how it reads currently. And that if there were things that would typically go to BZA and other zonings, that those would go to BZA. So the intent here is really to make this more like another zoning in terms of what the approval process is, with us being the final approval for the plans and BZA handling any variances. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
A little bit.
A little bit, okay.
I'm not being, I'll say that, because it may be me that's, so are we sending, we don't have all this fine tuned into anything we're going to, we do have a document to send to Planning Commission, but it sounds like it is still a work in progress.
It is still a work that probably could benefit from some additional changes. Yes, sir.
Okay.
The problem being, of course, that we're under a hundred and twenty-day, technically, we are not under a hundred and twenty-day deadline, but realistically, we've got to get this done in the next hundred and twenty.
All right, so let me just ask one question on that, and I'll let Mr. Wolverton speak. So my question is, do we, do we want to, here in council, or in committee, or wherever, chew on that any longer, or do we want to get it up to Planning Commission for it to chew on what we're going to send to them, which is, and I'm not being critical, this has been a very difficult work in progress, and with a timetable? Or do we want to send to them sort of a work in progress document? Now, Mr. Wolver...
Yeah, can I ask a clarifying question to a member of the Planning Commission? Any word on whether you guys plan to meet in July as scheduled, or?
To my knowledge, we are. I haven't heard any different. If we...
Just because it's the week of the fourth, so I didn't know that.
Yeah, we have to meet. I mean, it may not be on that first Tuesday, but to my knowledge, we are. I haven't been informed of any different. Let me check our calendar.
Okay. I guess, kind of a follow-up side question to that would be, is there anything against, you know, basically having, having a working document that's within, that's sitting in front of the Planning Commission while we continue to process it on the council side of things? I know that sounds a little...
I think what I, you know, I think we discussed this a couple of weeks ago, given, I think the quickest, smartest route, given the time and straits we're under, would be to recommend to the Planning Commission some high-level, very few high-level tweaks, because we all know there's more things that would like to be changed. I did have a discussion with Lindsey Puck with the RPC this afternoon. Didn't have a chance to tell you guys before we met, that, you know, placemakers will be here at the end of this week discussing the sign and downtown zoning, and I think you should, they're willing to help us with this. All that being said, you know, I think the cleanest you can send to Planning Commission right now, the better chance of having something back in a timely fashion. I would not overwhelm them, and I think Mr. Kendrick would agree. You can't just delete whole sections out of zoning, and because typically, it affects other sections. I just don't want it to get bogged down.
If I might add to your point about being engaged in the process, what I did with the landscape ordinance was, you can go to the zoning subbook committee meeting, or however it's phrased, and participate in the discussion and have some impact on the changes, because those are open meetings and anybody can attend.
Are you referring to going to the Planning Commission meeting?
Well, once the Planning Commission gets it, they'll recommend it to the subbook committee that reviews zoning changes.
When is that? Do you know?
I'm not sure.
Just to answer your question, you can't have input and be a part of the work in progress that way.
I feel like Mike and I put together a, kind of a bullet point of some of the most important things that we perceive that need to be changed.
The planning zoning subcommittee meets on the, tends to be, what does that look like, the third Tuesdays of the month?
And also, your attendance would be good, because what that'll do is, that'll help you provide definition and say, like, we changed this because of this. So at least they have some context to work from. So if they don't, why would it go off in a different direction?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Mr. Higginbotham?
If the council, I mean, obviously, it's the council's pleasure as to what they want to do. If the council wants to move ahead of the document we have now, I'm happy to go to the zoning book subcommittee meetings and talk about these other bullet points and let them handle that as they move it out. It was just, I did want to fine tune the process, and some of the things were difficult to ride into the book, like, for example, the fact that the maps don't agree. That's a hard thing to ride into.
Articulate, yeah.
Yeah, to articulate. They need to be made to agree. That needs to happen, but that was not something I could make to happen, and...
It's not specifically...
But I can certainly talk with them about that. I know that, I think our, well, Greg's still here, but Mr. Pugh's gone. I know the staff knows that they don't agree, because we've had a conversation with them. So if we want to move the document forward we got now, and then have either Andrew or I are both go to the meeting and talk about some of these other points, I'm happy to do it that way. Whatever the pleasure of the council is, I just, we're just under the gun a little bit, and so I just want to do whatever is expeditious and acceptable to my colleagues.
So just to follow up on the subcommittee, to clarify, so if we vote to move it forward tonight, Planning Commission has a meeting before the subcommittee would meet?
Yes, it'll be put on the agenda for the Planning Commission, and they'll refer it to the subcommittee from that first Tuesday meeting.
So basically, it's not going to really be discussed at the Planning Commission meeting initially?
No. It could be, but most likely not.
So would it be, since we are going to have committee meetings before then, would we be able to fine tune?
Well, guys, I think what I would say is, anything we're sending from here is strictly a recommendation.
Sure.
And you don't have to be, in my opinion, and somebody correct me, this doesn't have to be an official, anything official. You can communicate throughout the process, because whatever they end up passing is going to come here anyways. So I would not get bogged down in precision details, just, again, some high-level tweaks to get us through.
Sounds like the Planning Commission subcommittee gives us a good vehicle. Once we get the vehicle up there, it gives us a good form to, for you and Mike to, and anyone else, of course, and all of us, to, I mean, it sounds like that's what it's designed for, and that is further along in the process than probably sending it back to a committee here, even though we could refine it and make it, but it sounds like we can accomplish the same thing further along the process up in Planning Commission.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I don't disagree with the subcommittee route. That's fine with me. Simply, we can talk to them then about our intent. It was always my expectation that what I put together in a week was probably going to be subject to educated revision by the Planning Commission, so there's no pride of authorship, and I'd be happy to go to the meeting and give them other ideas as we move along. So I would move we just send the document that came out of, oh, well, they've already got a motion, don't we?
Just, yeah, one other quick clarification for the record, there's been a large number the record. There's been a large number of people in the neighborhood that have raised the concern of the, the usage for the West Homewood District regarding residential allowing VRBO or Airbnb officially. I think if there's a way to make sure that that is not allowed in what we're sending forward, that would appease many of the residents, but...
Don't we, don't, don't we already have an ordinance?
Well, the Homewood Ordinance does not explicitly forbid condos, apartments. It's only for single-family residences, is my understanding from 2016.
Are there any condos or apartments in the West Homewood?
Uh, there's about to be.
Well, it's about to be six, and it would still allow...
And we would, we were still talking about mixed use with commercial and residential on top.
Structural designs, I suppose.
I think, I think townhouses are considered single-family residences, are they?
Well, no, can I address that?
Mr. Higginbotham?
And this is something I've talked with great length, with Mr. Pugh about when this all came up. So the description and the definition for townhouse that, that was in the West Home District, West Homewood District previously, I would say would be, trying to say this in a way that makes sense, it was a construction distinction, not an ownership distinction. So these are going to be condos in the traditional sense of a condo, in that there will be shared elements that are owned by all six parties, et cetera, so on, so forth.
They're not on separate lots?
They're not on separate lots, for example. They're all on one lot. And so there'll be shared elements, and they will be, from a legal perspective, and now, I'm not an attorney, but just based on being in real estate for 13 years, from a legal perspective, it seems to me they're condos, because they're gonna have one lot, shared elements, and the developer said they're gonna be condos. So they're gonna look like townhouses, but that, you know, that doesn't, what it looks like doesn't have anything to do with what it is, if that makes sense. I could build a single-family house that looks like three townhomes, but it could be one house on the inside. So I mean, it, the townhouse was a distinction of construction type, not ownership, if that makes sense.
Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Wouldn't that be an adjustment to the existing ordinance? That wouldn't have anything to do with this actual ordinance. This is something totally different in the zoning book. This would, that would be something that we would need to adjust in the existing ordinance.
I agree with you. I was just explaining the townhouse first, Chris.
Yeah, no, that made, you made sense. I made a hundred percent sense.
All right, I think what we're doing right now, guys, so then what we're doing, we're sending recommendations, okay? We can't send any binding, controlling. And so I think all that well-received, you know, language and, and restrictions... Well, we're sending recommendations, and so what I think we need to figure out is, if we're gonna send up, we're gonna, we're gonna work on this up there, or we're gonna work on this back in our committee. I think the general consensus I'm viewing here is to send it up to Planning Commission and work it up there, and certainly work on those issues that we want to do to limit it, or restrict it in whatever additional manner. All right, so I will entertain a motion to, well, I guess we have a motion from, from PND already. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Wilverton. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so we will send the document we have to date to PND, and we will work on it with PND until we get it back. Mr. Kendrick?
What I, what I have is what Mike proposed to the council last week, plus Vicki has given some comments, plus Mike's additional email today. I include all that in the packet.
All right, and I'm, as I said, does anybody have any objections to all of that going to...
Would it be possible to also hand off to Mr. Kendrick some of the resident, residents' emails, including some that are on boards within the city?
You can, Melody can forward that to Plankton, whatever you like.
Yeah, you can do that. You forward that to Melody. She'll forward it to Planning Commission. All right, anything further in this item? All right, so it stands approved. Heading to Planning Commission, we'll go from there. All right, next item is 250417, which is a request for consideration of 18th Street Revitalization Project coming to us from Brett Thames, and we get a report from Finance on this.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted four to zero to recommend approval pending obtaining additional information on timing. So four to zero out of Finance.
All right, further discussion on this, further information on timing? Do we, do we need further information on timing before we consider this?
Well, I apologize, I was, I was out of town last week to make the committee, but it's my understanding that this is basically just committing us to the, to the entire project. So none of, none of these additional funds would be extended, expanded until subsequent budget year.
Okay. All right, any further discussion on this? We have a motion of approval from Finance. I'll entertain a second. Second by Mrs. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so that's Resolution 1995. Stands as approved. Next item, 260419, which is a bid opening that was held on June 3rd for fuel tank at Station Number Three by Chief President in the Fire Department, and we have a report from Finance on this.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted four to zero to recommend rejecting all bids and having Chief President negotiate with the sole bidder. So four to zero out of Finance.
Okay, and information I have is that, that negotiation perhaps may be going on, and that ultimately we may need a new bid, as I understand. But I don't think it changes the, the report from Finance or, or consideration of it. So this is a approval out of Finance for negotiating, further negotiation on this bid for the fuel tank at Station Three. Approval from Finance, I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, no resolution on that one, Mike?
Yes, sir, if you reject the bid, it's fine. I, I talked to the chief, and he told me he was just gonna reject the bid on Friday. I didn't know about the negotiations, but he certainly can negotiate that. He comes back and negotiates, and then we'd have to have a resolution authorized and agreed.
Okay, all right. Next item, 270519, which is a request for the city to declare surplus in alley between 2600 and 2630 18th Street South from Eddie Cleveland and Greg Cobb with BEZ, and we get a report from Finance on this as well.
All right.
2705...
For this, yeah, yeah, the, we got a report from Mr. Cobb, and the, it was voted zero to four for approval.
Okay, so we have a motion failing out of Finance Committee, zero to four. And so I think what I have to do, Mike, can you correct me, is I have to consider if anyone else wants to offer a motion on this item? If not, it will fail for non-action?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so I'll entertain if anyone wants to provide a motion for approval of the request to declare surplus, the alley between 2600 and 2630 18th Street South. Seeing no such action, 270519 will fail. Next item, 020619, request to authorize the mayor to sign the Historic Commission Grant Application for Union Baptist Church in Rosedale from Counselor Barry Smith, and we get a report from Special Issues Counselor Barry Smith.
Yes, we heard a presentation from Susan Zuber, who's the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission last week, and supplied the working document to Mike in anticipation of having the mayor sign that tonight. But turns out that there was some last-minute language that came up that threw a little kink in things, and the, apparently, the grant person at the Alabama Historic Commission is not, no longer there. So I'm gonna ask that we carry this over, so that they can get some things clarified before we have the mayor sign that.
Okay, no objection. We'll carry over.
Thank you.
020619. Next item, 030619, request for consideration for Alabama Power to remove four streetlights and poles at the corner of 18th Street and 28th Avenue for the New Valley Hotel Project from Randy Hamley with Traffic Department and others with Robbins and Morton, and we get a report from Public Safety.
Yes, sir. The committee met and voted three to zero to recommend approval. The motion was made by Counselor Wilverton and seconded by Counselor Andrus.
All right, any further discussion on this? I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McCloskey. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, this is gonna be Resolution 1996. Stands approved. Next item, 040619, which is a request to address traffic concerns on Brookwood Boulevard and potential crosswalk at Alabama Allergy. This came to us from Counselor Jennifer Andrus, and we get a report from Public Safety on this one as well.
Yes, sir. The committee met, and after hearing from Randy Hamley and Berkeley Squires, voted zero to three to recommend approval. The motion was made by Counselor Andrus and seconded by Counselor Wilverton. The motion failed.
Gotcha. So it did fail, and so here we are again with a report from Public Safety, that motion failed for approval. And just like the other one, I will open and entertain a motion if anyone wants to move for approval on this. Seeing none, then item 040619 will also fail. Next item, 060619, request to consider adding a stop sign at the intersection of Roseland Drive and West Lynnwood from Mayor Scott McBrayer and Josh Young, and on this one, we also get a report from Public Safety.
Yes, sir. The committee met, and after hearing from Randy Hamley, voted zero to three to recommend approval. The motion was made by Counselor Andrus and seconded by Counselor Wilverton. The motion failed.
I wish I had picked a different week.
The Public Safety Committee is where you send things to die.
Right, yes, and it did.
The Grim Reaper.
So, let me just...
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Well, just one thing, thanks to Public Safety for considering it. In talking with Josh, I think he knew there was a pretty good chance it probably wasn't gonna pass because of some other things in the area, but just, what a nice resident, and I just wanted to say thanks for looking at it. There's a lot of kids on the street over there, and we'll circle back around at some point and see what else can be, can be done over there, but thanks to the committee for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and sort of formally do it, I'll entertain a motion for approval by anyone. Seeing none, then 060619 will also fail. All right, next item, 070619, request to authorize the mayor to sign a one-year contract with radio provider Tango Tango to add a push-to-talk police radio to their cellphone. This coming to us from Corporal John Self with our Police Department, and we get a report from Finance.
All right, the committee met, voted four to zero to recommend approval of this item with Tango Tango.
All right, we have favorable report and approval of a motion out of Finance. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
By Mr. Higginbotham. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so that's gonna be Resolution, I lost my number here.
1997.
Thank you, 1997. Stands approved. Next item, 090619, request for consideration to surplus, a Parks and Recreation 2006 Ford 500. I will not read the VIN number. Coming to us from Berkeley Squires, Public Works Director, and we get a report from Finance on this surplus item.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted four to zero to recommend approval of this item.
All right, it's favorable, favorable report from Finance, and Mike, I think we're ready for the first reading.
Yes, there's an ordinance to declare certain personal property and equipment as surplus. hereby establish and declare that the following described personal property of the city, parking recreation board is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes, therefore declared surplus, 2006 Ford 500, last forward of VIN 7706. Section two, the mayor shall be authorized to dispose of the property by auction to the highest bidder.
Thank you, Mike. I'll entertain a motion for unanimous consent by Mr. Higginbotham.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Andrus, and roll call vote, Melody.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wilverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright.
Yes, and I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
By Mr. Gualtney, second by Mrs. Smith. Another roll call vote, Melody.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wilverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright.
Yes, and so we have a 10-0 vote for, I think it's ordinance 2750. Did I have that right? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And next item, 100619, request for consideration to contribute to the bicentennial fireworks display on July 4th this year from Mayor McBrayer and our Chief of Staff, JJ. Report from Finance.
Yes, sir. The committee met, voted four to zero to recommend approval of this item.
All right, we have favorable vote out of Finance. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Second by...
This also has a budget transfer included.
Correct.
Okay.
Was this, was this, is this a budgeted item?
No, it was not.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
The transfer is for $5,000.
$5,000.
Gotcha, all right.
That's right.
All right, so I got a motion for approval out of Finance and a second, I think it was by Mr. Thames.
I was coughing, but I will second it.
Okay, well, we, we've designated you with a second, so congratulations. And all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so we have Resolution 1998. That stands approved. Okay, well, we designated you with a second, so congratulations. And all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so we're Resolution 1998. That stands approved. Moving along, next item, 1106-19, request to consider lot size requirements for our parking pads. This coming from Councilor Jennifer Andrus and Resident Betsy McGuire, and we get a report from PND on this item.
Yes, sir, the committee met and voted four to zero to recommend approval of amending the, of moving the minimum up to 75 feet to have two driveway entrances.
It's up to 75 feet from 60 feet.
From 60.
Gotcha, okay. All right, and we, yes. Mr. Kendrick, would that change need to go to the planning commission? Or is it minimal?
No, let me see. It is a zoning ordinance amendment. It's also in the subdivision regulations.
I think it does.
I'm sorry, it is not a zoning ordinance, it's a standalone ordinance. No, it doesn't need to be. It's in the subdivision regulations, which the planning commission adopts. They'll have to amend theirs.
Second.
All right, so I think we got a first reading on this, Mike?
Yes, there's an ordinance to amend subsection D entitled "The Maximum of Entrances." For each site shall be limited on the basis of the curb frontage for properties of section 18-9 entitled "Driveway Access to Streets of Article 1" entitled "In General of Chapter 18" entitled "Streets and Sidewalks of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Homewood." Be ordained that subsection D is amended to provide that curb frontage width of less than 75 feet, excuse me, less than or equal to 75 feet would permit one entrance greater than 75 feet, up to 150 feet with 200, two entrances, et cetera, nothing else changed. The only change was the entrance for the minimum of 75 feet. Section two, that all the provisions of the driveway access ordinance remains in full force and effect. Section four, the ordinance become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council.
Thank you, sir. Entertain a motion for unanimous consent on this ordinance. By Mr. Hickinbotham, second by Mr. Thames. Roll call vote, Ms. Melody.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hickinbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright.
Yes, and so that's ordinance 2751, stands as approved. All right, moving on to our amended committee referral agenda, I will entertain a motion for approval of the committee referral agenda as amended.
So moved, second.
By Mr. Hickinbotham, second by Mrs. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, that agenda, that referral agenda is approved. Other new business, 3206-19, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a variance to the signed ordinance at 109 Wildwood Parkway, coming from Greg Cobb and the BEZ. We're going to set a public hearing for that for July 8th. Next item, 3306-19, request for consideration of an ABC restaurant retail liquor license for RSC Homewood LLC doing business as Ruby Sunshine Cafe located at 1017 Oxmore Road, Suite 101. And we have approval from police, but we don't have approval from fire yet. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Wright?
Yes, Mr. McCloskey. Well, I will move as to having no objection to the issuance of the license based off of the, when, when fire gets done, pending, thank you, pending is the word, pending fires' approval.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval pending fire department approving it's part of the inspection as well.
Second.
By Mr. Thames, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so that stands as approved for Ruby Sunshine, I can't wait to open. 3406-19, request for consideration of ABC restaurant retail liquor license for SK88 LLC doing business as The Seafood King located at 180 State Farm Parkway, coming to us from our city clerk, Melody. And I think we have the same situation here, we have police approval, but we do not have the fire inspection approval on this item, this item.
Yes, well, I'll move to having no objection to the issuance of the license pending fire.
All right, same motion from Mr. McCloskey, second by Mr. Wolverton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that stands approved as well. Next item, 3506-19, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract for the Homewood Public Library Computer Lab Edition, coming to us from Debbie Fout, our library director. And I don't know, Mayor or Debbie, I don't know who wants to speak to this, let us know what this one is about.
We're so excited, but we finally got our bid opening done on the 13th, and Bennett Building got the contract, and it was for $1,001,646.56. And we met with Davis Architects and the builders last Thursday, and we've got the contract in order. Mr. Kendrick has looked it over, and so we're ready to have the mayor sign it, hopefully tonight.
Wonderful, and was this within budget?
Uh-huh.
Was it within budget?
Uh-huh.
Great, okay. All right, any further questions? I'll entertain a motion for approval by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Hickinbotham, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right, good, stands approved. Good luck, Debbie, can't wait. Thank you.
Last item tonight, 3606-19, request for consideration of approval of the vouchers
of June 11th, 2019 through June 12th, 2019. Is it Britt?
It was me, I think it was my last time.
Oh, I thought there was a little giddy up in your step today.
Mr. Hickinbotham?
No. One large late add, which was most likely, was most likely the final invoices for the West Homewood Parks, which is great, but everything is in order, I would recommend approval.
Great, we have motion for approval from Mr. Thames, second by Mr. Hickinbotham, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so vouchers approved through June 24. All right, that gets us into our agenda, and off to the mayor and comments. Mr. Mayor?
Nothing but not, because we're going to have like a public contract signing.
A celebration, I think.
Yeah.
Or a party, yeah. All right, yeah, at the end, I'm sure we will. All right, Mr. Gualtney?
Just two simple things, congratulations to Ms. Fout for working through all of this and getting the contract signed, and looking forward to what the library is going to do with their new addition. I just wanted to keep the council on the loop about the developments on Eighteenth Street. Britt and I had a meeting with the Rosedale community last week on Thursday, and the developers, and had a good dialogue. The developers are going to go back to the drawing board and try to address some concerns, primarily centered around height of the structure, and then probably end up carrying it over at the July Planning Commission meeting, hopefully making the August Planning Commission meeting. And lastly, just a reminder that Thursday, we have a work session with the RPC and Planning Commission for the Downtown Code, and there's also two public input sessions, 12 to 1:00 and then 5:30 to 6:30.
Can I ask you a question about those two public input sessions, because I can only attend one? Are they, are they covering the same thing?
Yeah, exactly.
They are, so it is, okay, that's, that was the purpose.
So this is draft two of the Downtown Code, and the first draft of the downtown, or the citywide signage ordinance.
Gotcha, all right, thank you, Mr. Gualtney, Mr. Thames?
Mr. Jones, how much time we need for finance?
Forty-five minutes.
All right, I will set PND for 5:45. Mr. Wyatt, you think we'll need much time for your agenda item, or will we discuss it?
Yes, we will need some time.
Thirty minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, for 30 minutes. And just, I missed it, it was, I missed the special, it looked like all those failures in Public Safety. But just kind of on that topic, the one about the stop signs, yeah, really, the stop sign caught my eye. Councilman Gualtney and I met Clark from Volker Friday and got a first look at our traffic calming document he's putting together, and I think it's really going to help address some agenda items like that. It's going to give us a process that'll, that'll hopefully streamline it, and it will also provide us with some preset options for those type of situations, take a lot of conjecture out of it, so I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Thames, Mr. Hickinbotham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess the only thing I would do is echo Counselor Gualtney's comments to Ms. Fout. I'm very excited about the library, I've sat on both sides of this dais with that project as a library board member, and now as a council member, and so I'm really excited to have it happen, and you probably couldn't hear me say it up here, Debbie, when it came around, I said, rather than saying aye, I felt like saying amen when it came up, so I'm excited for you guys, and I know you're going to do some great things over there, but other than that, I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you, Mike, and Andrew Wolverton?
Yeah, I'd actually like to send a shout-out to the libraries for a different reason. Busy all day at work, and usually for whatever reason, if I get a chance to get on social media at night, for whatever reason, the Facebook account pops up with some of their funny memes and things, so if you guys don't get those, you should definitely sign up, because you'll get a good chuckle every day. They've got some good ones out there, so. And then I'd just like to recognize my son, who turned four on Father's Day last weekend. He got his shots today to prove it, he's been walking around like a maimed animal. And then he went to the dentist after that, so he had a great day.
He had an old one in one.
That's right. And then my wife, who had her birthday the next day, so they're back-to-back, so.
What'd you do to her?
No, no doctors or dentist visits for her.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wolverton, Mr. McCloskey.
So Britt, 6:15 for Public Safety. Did you say you needed 30?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do Public Safety at 6:15, and I think Mr. Wyatt's got mine, but I think there's only, I think there's only one item that is on referral, and that may be the only one that's left, because as Mr. Thames said, everything failed while we weren't there. So, so you guys were, you guys were proficient, I like it.
Yeah, that's it.
So it should just be the one, okay, well, then we'll do, we'll do 15 minutes for Public Safety, and that'll be it.
Thank you, Mr. McCloskey, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, finance will be at 5:00, and I actually have a funny library story. My 18-year-old is working at the park with the summer camp and everything, and they thought it would be a great idea to bring their, their 40 children down to the library. You have wonderful programs, so they were playing bingo, and then he realized when they started playing bingo that none of the five-year-olds that he brought could, could read. So they proceeded to try to play bingo without these children knowing how to read, so it, everybody was yelling bingo at the same time, and they were really not winning bingo, but it was a great story, wonderful program, so maybe we can do something for the children that can't read yet. So anyway, that's all I have. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and Mrs. Smith?
I will set special issues for 6:30. I'm actually not going to be here, and I've already asked Ms. Andrus to chair that meeting for me. And there's only a couple of items on referral, but then there's some existing items, I know one of which for sure is going to be coming back, so I don't really want to say 30 minutes, but just to be safe, I'm going to say 30 minutes, sorry, Peter. And then I also will not be here on the first, well, I said that, I won't be here for the eighth either, but, and I won't be here for the place that are, I mean, the, the follow-up meeting on Thursday, because my son and I are flying to Chicago for him to play soccer, which is what we do. And I'd like to announce that the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission is sponsoring a forum tomorrow night with Ben Wiseman from Rev Birmingham, he's going to be talking about rehabilitating and revitalizing communities, and that is from 6:30 to 7:30 at the public library, thank you very much, in room 102. And they're, they're really trying very hard to put these forums together that might be of interest to people, so that might be something y'all want to check out. And I want to give a shout-out to Scott Cook, he's not here, Randy Hambley also not here, but I was, I was out walking in the morning last week, and there were guys working on the creek walls on Roseland, fixing them, and there was Randy with his entire crew restriping the entire intersection at Kennelworth and Roseland, which desperately needed it. And then today, Scott Cook went to a house that I'd had a call about and rescued a turkey vulture, and I'll show y'all the picture of him holding this crazy-looking turkey vulture, and he took it to the Oak Mountain Raptor Rescue Center. So he solved two problems, he helped these neighbors and rescued a bird, so shout-out to our wonderful employees. No, no, he said he was keeping the pictures that I sent him for documentation for the, for the file, yeah, so that's it.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Smith, and Mr. Wyatt?
Just like to thank Berkeley Squires and his team with all the trees that came down, including all the ones that fortunately did not come on my house or on my cars, but hit like all my neighbors' houses. They were out there early in the morning and got the streets cleared amazingly quick, so we all appreciate them getting out and doing that.
And Mrs. Andrus?
I had Berkeley on my list, too, because they were out on the Lake Shore Trail this morning, first thing, there was a big tree that was down blocking, and also last week the road to the high school was covered up, and so I want to thank Berkeley for his responsiveness there. It's been almost two weeks, but we haven't had a council meeting. Ms. Smith, Mr. Thames, and I got to ride on the Magic City Connector, so we met Counselor Darrell O'Quinn and Corey Petway from his office down at Birmingham City Hall, and paid 25 cents, which I had to borrow from Counselor O'Quinn. But only 25 cents, and rode up 20th Street, and actually, did we get, we went to Uptown on the way back, you didn't get to go to Uptown, right? Okay, so we rode up 20th, and, and Melody, or not Melody, sorry, Meredith Jordan was waiting for us at Soho, and took our picture, and then we had to pay 25 cents to get back on, we had to borrow again. But anyway, it is 25 cents to ride, there's an app you can download, you can watch the buses as they progress, they're 15 minutes apart, there are four buses right now, this is a great success that we know it will be, they will be adding a fifth bus. And so it's just really a great route to add for us, and I really recommend any students headed to UAB or UAB students coming over here to eat, to jump on that bus, it's a great asset for our community. Speaking of Mr. Thames and Mrs. Smith, I'd like to say belated birthday to Mrs. Smith and early birthday to Mr. Thames, and that's it.
Wonderful, and Mr. Wolverton?
Yeah, just, well, I did forget to thank Berkeley for cleaning up, sending crews to clean up some stuff in our neighborhood as well, and then there was one other thing that I forgot that jumped out at me on the drive over here tonight, which is that some of the new striping has begun on Oxmore, and it looks great, and hopefully this, this company that we've found is a keeper and can continue to help us with some of our, our striping woes. It's definitely, and hopefully it'll help decrease the number of calls that our police get for people bumping into each other and that sort of thing.
Absolutely, thank you. Just two comments, one, just to say something again, I think I said last council meeting, boy, what good news from the Birmingham Transit Authority. Let's say something good about the Birmingham Transit Authority, and they're very excited about what's happening with our Magic City Connector, and more excited about the, you know, the work that's taking place, and some good communication taking place, so hats off to them for what they're doing, it really is, it's, it's noticeable. Also, I also want to take hats off to my two WRT councilmates who have really worked overtime on this West Homewood District Code, and, and I'm glad we got a vehicle, even if it's a work in progress, you guys have worked hard to give us something to get up there and to start working on this in planning commission, and I know it's taken a lot of y'all's time, and I just wanted to commend you all for that. I know the feeling when those issues come, come upon your, your ward, so. And lastly, I don't think I'm going to set Public Works, not because I just don't want to set it, but we, I'm going to wait to hear if we get approval from Montgomery on our stormwater and Amy before I set it. If we do set it, we'll announce it by email, but I think it's so tentative, and it's, I've been pushed to bloody 7:00 o'clock now, so, so I'll let you guys know if we're going to have a stormwater discussion at 7:00 or not, and, but for now, we're going to keep it off the agenda. And for that, we are adjourned, thank you.